And. It's down in front. Okay, it is June 4th and the time is 2:45 PM. This is the city council study session. Can we have a roll call, please Dana?
Councillor Woodruff.
Here.
Mayor Buell.
Here.
Mayor Proten Miyazi.
Here.
Councillor Yousad.
Here.
Councillor Bosmans.
Here.
Okay, let's get started. For section innovation, housing and economic development.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Scott Shine with the Community Development Department, happy to give you a quick monthly update on some activities related to innovative housing and economic development. We're going to start with a quick update regarding some activities in the Housing Division. This is something that council has been involved in in recent months, so we wanted to just close the loop for you. After approving the Twin Buttes Housing Compliance Agreement, we've continued to move forward in partnership with Twin Buttes and we have been deeded the parcel of land so that they can adhere to their compliance agreement. And we are now moving forward with discussions with Elevation Community Land Trust and Fading West, which is a modular home builder. The project will ultimately have thirty-four sale units of affordable housing. Those will be ownership units, so a different model than residences at Durango, which will be rental for households earning between seventy and one hundred and twenty percent of the area median income. So a great partnership here. Everybody got out on site and we have a conceptual site plan and we're moving through the next phase, next stages there to do more detailed engineering for the project. This is along with Twin Buttes one percent transfer fee that's in perpetuity. This is how Twin Buttes is complying with their affordable housing commitment. Another recent development, which we're very excited about and to follow up on an email that was sent to council on Friday briefly, we, after issuing a request for proposals for the property in nineteen seventeen East Third, and after going through interviews and reviews of all the proposals submitted, we've issued a notice of intent to award to the partnership shown here on the screen, related to both early childhood education and workforce housing. So, an amazing sort of opportunity that relates to two really key priorities right now for our community. As you know, the city owns that parcel to the north and leases it to Tri-County Head Start. The idea is to move Head Start to the currently vacant lot and rebuild a new facility to serve, I believe it's between eighty and ninety children, early childhood education, including infants. Develop a nice new facility there. Tri-County Head Start is currently pursuing some outside funding to pay for all the site development and all the construction. City is would just bring the land to the the table. And then that building where Head Start is currently located would be demolished. It's a pretty old, not really reusable structure and upwards of twenty-two new workforce housing units could be built on that site. There are some conceptual plans, but there's a lot of details to work out on how that will take shape. We want to do some engagement with the adjacent property owners in the neighborhood, get some ideas about the design and how that'll function, but the overall concept is very exciting and that's exactly what we wanted to do when we put out the request for proposals was get creative and sort of innovative ideas about how to use this property. So we'll continue to keep council updated as we take these next steps, but just wanted to make sure you knew that on the front end. I think this is a great example of being in line with what you just adopted in the strategic plan as far as innovative housing and economic development. We have a great team, as you know, and people who are really wanting to do things that are progressive and and proactive and not just sitting back and waiting for things to to take shape and, you know, there's some risk involved in that and that's a little bit of a different model for how we do community development, but it's really fun to be a part of that and be a part of a team that's really sold on that idea and wanting to do meaningful work. So, thank you for your support of that and for recognizing that in the strategic plan, the value that you put on being innovative and proactive. Next, Economic Opportunity Division, just a quick summary of a lot of their work regarding putting money out into the community to get projects done. Thirty-two projects have been funded so far this year. Councillor Woodruff, you've been involved in a lot of those with lodgers tax. The other two programs, the Renew Grant and Durango Creates Grants were sort of our small, quick, light grant programs just to get property improvements done and sort of arts and culture projects done before lodger's tax was established. So those continue to to be effective in supporting those smaller scale projects, but work towards improvements in the community. And then as far as Development Services, just wanted to highlight a few major projects that received approval this past month. This resulted in the top three resulted in forty-three new housing units, twenty new tiny homes and twenty-three new townhomes either completed or kicked off construction. The ZIC CR238 is over on Gigline Gulch there. You may have seen some grading off to the east of Gigline Gulch Road. You'll see the Starbucks project tonight on your regular agenda and then Starbucks is in that area, but Crater Ranch Construction continues to be a real hotspot. Mesa Verde Senior Living and your credit union and other commercial development is really taking off out there, especially now that the the bridge is going to be open, that interchange will be active. Related to what I shared with you last month, we have hired a new building inspector. Daniel Murray in our office worked really hard with HR to get that out and turn around that hiring really quickly. We're pleased with that and appreciate the support there, but we'll continue to have contracted plan review and inspection services just to kind of get our new inspector Jared kind of in the loop and and comfortable in the new role. That may continue as we evaluate sort of our permit technician and our administrative roles and just sort of operationally how we manage the volume of plan review right now. It's it's at a really high level. I won't say higher than I've ever seen, but definitely a very high volume. And then in July, we're getting ready to launch OpenGov, which is our online permitting software that we've shared with you. We'll do some trainings and some outreach related to that over the coming months, both internally and with partner agencies and with some of our more frequent customers. And I wanted to end just with a little bit of coverage for a division that doesn't get a whole lot of love all the time. Code Compliance, it's not the most glamorous sort of function of the city, but it's, we feel like it's very important. It's a lot of the complaints that come in to you, to the city manager, and we're really fortunate to have Chris Simpson as our code compliance officer, very engaged in the community, wanting to be out in the community, helping educate people, not just going right away to an enforcement action, but helping to educate them, giving them some time to come into compliance before then, when necessary, taking more of a firm enforcement action. So it's worked out really well. I just wanted to highlight a few things here. Signs, lighting, you know, it doesn't seem like a big deal, but those are the things that really make up kind of the aesthetic and the feel of the community. And if we let those things go or we don't enforce things around banners or around lighting, it can really change the the feel of a place. So we feel like it's pretty important. We try and do it in a way that understands businesses need to advertise, they need to get their word out while also saying we want you to do it in a way that fits in the character of the community. So we try and walk that line and do that respectfully. Chris also does some great support for building permitting. He's able to back up the building inspector when they're out and then also working closely with the clerk's office with finance on things like business licenses and the fire district as far as fire code reviews. So just wanted to spotlight that for you to know that that often goes unseen, but it's an important part of our of our role. And if you don't get complaints, that means things are going well. And even if you do get complaints, sometimes it's because people don't like what we have to tell them. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Scott. All right, next up, we have organizational stewardship.
Could I ask Scott a couple of questions?
Oh, sorry, yes.
I had a couple along the way. I just wanted to wait until he finished. So sorry for butting in.
I think we'll do sectional, just that way. Yes, go ahead, go ahead, Melissa.
It sounds good. Scott, just a question on the housing. I'm wondering if we've heard anything from any updates on Tree Farm Village or Tree Farm Housing, manufactured home possible in the IGA area?
Yeah, they have been in communication with the county and we've we've had some outreach. I think the city manager and I are probably going to meet with the landowner and the applicants to talk about kind of that dynamic in the joint planning area between the city and county. So they're working on it. I don't think they've formally submitted for their next round of review, but there has been some communication with them.
Wonderful. That's great news. And another question I had is on on the lodger's tax funding, was the Santa Rita mural, was that part of Durango Creates?
I would have to check on that. I apologize. I think that was through the Creative Economy Commission that issued an invitation, a call for.
Which one was the Santa Rita?
The Santa Rita mural.
On the Santa Rita facility. So that was a work in progress with Parks and Rec and not Parks Rec, with utilities. There was some money left over from that and then they were able to align it with the CC to use some of those monies for some of those art projects. Correct on that, Allison? Okay, thank you.
Think that that was such a great project. I love to see that kind of work coming out in our community. It adds a lot of dimension. So I love that. And I also wanted to thank you, Scott, for enforcing the signage and lighting issues in our town. I think it's really important that we stay on top of that. So thank you so much for that.
Does anyone else have any other questions? Okay, great. Now, moving on, organizational stewardship.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mayor and Council. Today, the financial services update, so as per normal, going through the sales tax projected revenue to actuals. So April was ten percent above projected sales tax revenue. So looking good there. And we've been above our projection the entire year so far. So knock on wood, hope that continues. And we hope that we will have some fund balance at the end of the year because of it. General Fund Revenue did have a variance. We normally had been pretty accurate with this one, but this month, the largest variance was in the intergovernmental revenue. So that's just transfers from either the state or county or other governmental agencies, which are often paid in the rears. So, nothing that we're concerned about, definitely something that we are monitoring to make sure that any payments that we expect to come in are coming in on time. But as of right now, nothing that we're concerned about. Again, the biggest general fund revenue is sales tax and that was about ten percent above our projected forecast. So, nothing that we are too concerned with there and we will continue to monitor the variance. Expenses continue in the general fund, continue to be below the seasonally adjusted projection. We are monitoring to make sure that we are getting our strategic plan goals met. But as always, in general, being below budget on expenses is is a good thing. So we're pretty happy with where that is, but we will continue to monitor to make sure that there's deployment of funds as needed. Revenue for enterprise funds, we're tracking pretty much as expected, little bit of variance, but it being that they're a fee for service kind of thing, we expect a little bit more variance with them rather than just projecting the historic sales tax revenue. But no concerns really there. And for the enterprise funds, we, this month was a little strange because in our historic data, for water and sewer, we had made a pretty big transfer from their operating accounts to their capital accounts and that skews that data and makes that point in April and it shows that we have about a sixty-seven percent below our seasonally adjusted projection. We tend not to change the historic data at all, but for this one, when we were looking at it, we we did average that out so that that historic large payment wasn't in there and we're still tracking just as we would expect if if we didn't have that. So no real concerns there. We don't expect to have a large jump in expenses in those funds every April. It's just a little bit of skewed data.
I'm curious. Okay, so when you said you leveled out the historical data, did you just throw out the outliers on the top and the bottom?
Kind of, yeah. So in April of twenty nineteen, there was a twenty, there was a ten million dollar expense transferring from the operating to the capital accounts. And that doesn't normally happen. There, I think there was a pretty big project then. So what we did is we averaged what the transfer is normally and put that number in. But again, for reports to council and that sort of thing, we don't tend to change the historic data and we'll we'll show the variance even even though we know what it's accounted for. So.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Seeing the same variance on the capital revenues. So those are, those two things are directly related where it was a transfer from operating to capital. So the capital accounts accounted for more revenue, the operating accounts accounted for more expense. If we adjust that out, we're tracking long seasonally just as we expect. And the preliminary capital budget to actuals, on this one, we had been getting away from the seasonally projected forecast a little bit. So we did a little bit additional analysis and looked at the linear average of our year-to-date actuals and our projection. And what we can see by doing that is that they converge and they they are increasing just as we expect at the end. So that's a little bit of the extra analysis that we do when we see that we're not tracking as as we expect a little bit. But again, nothing really too concerning here. Some of the differences early in the years, we were just continuing capital projects from twenty twenty-three and had more expenses in the beginning of the year than we normally do. So we do still anticipate expenses to come up, to rise as we go into the warmer months and can do more capital projects. Next, just the other financial services update. So we are continuing to work on the strategic plan and especially the operating plan now, which is kind of that next level. Audit work is still continuing and we passed the May twenty-first budget amendment. So thank you for your partnership in that. For Fleeton Facilities, we've had forty-three work orders completed and a hundred and fifty warehouse counter transactions. So that is both transactions to the public, buying water meters and things like that, and internal transactions. So departments going in and talking to the warehouse division to get what they need. And then additionally, the CD and EAC and electrical upgrade that we had talked about as a budget amendment earlier this year, that project has started and it's in a good timeline to get finished before it gets too hot in that building for everybody there. And then for customer service, the food tax rebate and utility refund is still open until July fifth. And we have done five hundred and five thousand, three hundred and forty-four residential utility accounts. Twenty twenty-four winter average calculation conducted for sewer consumption billing. So we're doing analysis of all the, not all the accounts, but the residential utility accounts that we have as we move forward. And still same thing for the water station fill-up, the bulk water station filling. We are analyzing those accounts and updating as needed. And that concludes the financial service update. So council, any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Just real quick, Elliot, if you don't mind, and pardon my ignorance, whenever you talk about a seasonally adjusted projection, are you working off an index for that or are we like something that we use internally for like a seasonal adjustment?
No, so we use simple way to describe it is kind of a weighted average. So we look at monthly data for this one. These go back to twenty seventeen and we look at the actual expense by month for that. And using that, we can predict seasonality within our our future expenses. So we're using about six years of data, monthly data to predict where it's going to go going forward. So, yeah.
Sweet, thank you. Also, do you do you know what that year-over-year, like just straight up growth or?
Not off the top of my head. I could certainly look into that for you.
I'm more of a curious, you know, how are you doing year-over-year? But that does need to be solved right now, but I'm just more curious than anything to see what that year-over-year looks like.
Yeah, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't even have a number to throw it off the top of my head.
Yeah, don't even, thank you so much.
Yeah, no problem.
Anyone online? All right. Thank you, Elliot. Moving on to the DEI Cross Functional Team Monthly Report.
Hello. Okay, my name is Guthrie Hardisty. I work in Parks and Recreation at the Recreation Center and I'm here representing our DEI Cross Functional Team. It's made up of Kyle Delamora in the City Manager's Office, Clancy Nixon and Community Engagement, Spencer Snar in the Library, Kayla Grim in Human Resources, Mark Williams and Community Development, and Aaron Hyder is our staff liaison. And so our upcoming staff events, we've been doing these lunch and learns for staff. There's a virtual option and usually a live option as well. Our next one will be celebrating Juneteenth. It will be held on June twentieth. Our partner organization that helps to lead these, we have professionals that come in and that group is CPS HR. They will be presenting a virtual lunch and learn on the historical background and the legacy of the Juneteenth holiday, holiday. And so that's coming up very shortly and that's our next lunch and learn. After that, I would like to introduce McKenna Armstrong. McKenna is our senior lifeguard, one of our senior lifeguards at the pool at the Recreation Center, and McKenna did some amazing work that she's going to tell you a little bit about.
Cool. I am, was a student at Fort Lewis and now I'm an alum. But for my senior thesis, I'm a sociology major and I came up with the thesis of how does institutional racism and intergenerational trauma correlate to minorities having lack of access and opportunities to swim lessons, therefore causing higher drowning rates? And I applied for a public health grant and with that funding from the grant, I was able to put on free swim lessons for BIPOC people, BIPOC meaning Black Indigenous People of Color. And just to provide a really amazing opportunity for the community. I had a total of twenty-four participants and seven instructors, including myself. My participants' ages ranged from eighteen months to twenty-five years old and it was a super cool opportunity. So thanks for letting me do that. Any questions?
What a great initiative and and yeah, success story. Thank you so much. Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, moving on, safety and quality of life, Parks and Recreation Department.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. See if I can push through. I apologize ahead of time, feeling a little under the weather. Kelly Schmidt, Parks and Recreation Director, here to share with you March and April combined service delivery, the Parks and Recreation Team. We're going to start off with our capital improvement projects update. So the Animus River Trail, we've got a featuring of replacement of existing section of the ART from Santa Rita Park to the Doubletree, replacing concrete paving, new railing, installing lights, expanding the sightline at the radius on the south side of Highway one sixty underpass. All began on construction. All began on construction bids received May twenty third for that project. Chapman Ski Hill update, we had a community meeting on April tenth. And the contractor is out there installing the the lights, actually Musco lighting this week. Durango Mesa Park, we also had some meetings with Durango Mesa Park as well as Lake Night Horse entry and decantamination station. The contractors mobilizing traffic control and stormwater B M Ps in place, earthwork starting the first week of June. Ryler Park renovation updates to small neighborhood park. Neighborhood meeting was held April twenty fifth and people are really excited, not a lot of expectations on that one. But it's low hanging fruit and we'll just move the meter for the immediate community. They're very excited to get started. And then Schneider Park, lots of updates with pickleball projects. We've got the swing set, the shade structure and the remaining flatwork completed. The Animus River Trail lights are installed, landscaping and irrigation is installed. And the the public art project, our our bike racks, if you haven't seen them yet, they are shaped to look like paddle ball rackets. Super excited about those. And we're waiting still a little bit of warmer temperatures, but they're on the way for the installation of the court surfacing. Moving on to our parks and open space and trails. We've got our winterization of the restrooms and the irrigation systems are all open and flowing. We had had our D A Y S A soccer tournament, May eleventh and twelfth. The Animus River Trail averaged a one thousand thirty three trips per day in March and one thousand, three hundred and twenty trips per day in April. We also, even though this isn't a March and April update, I just wanted to give a shout out to the hundred flower baskets delivered to the downtown area. Excuse me. With a summary of Lake Night Horse, I'm sorry, excuse me. Natural Lands Division, Lake Night Horse currently open as everyone's aware, but now we're open eight to six daily as of May fifteenth. On opening weekend, we had a total of three hundred and two vehicles with ninety three day passes and two hundred and nine season passes. Additional fire mitigation work has been completed at Twin Buttes Open Space. And the staff, the Natural Land staff hosted a three day community service project with the big picture high school students and they picked up trash in the open space during that time. Also, Natural Land staff noted five hundred and three users per day counted at trailheads in March and eight hundred seventy nine users per day counted in April. The cemetery replaced an irrigation pump at Schneider Park. The pump was a value of fifty thousand dollars and it was donated by Frank Houston, whose wife is interred at the Green Mount, excuse me, cemetery. Of the forestry division, as you recall, we had an April, an Arbor Day Festival, April nineteenth. We planted eight trees, Santa Rita Park with three different groups, Boys and Girls Club and the Parks and Recreation Game Time Kits. The Forestry Management Plan, April seventeenth, had its first community meeting and May fifteenth had its second community meeting. Just a few highlights from the recreation facilities. Combined, again, these numbers are March and April. The total users in Chapel Hill Rink was do not reflect all of the rentals that he manages and the numbers of people that attend those. And the numbers were up for the Community Recreation Center, again reflecting that approximately one thousand users per day number, excuse me. Out of water. And the gymnastics center is seeing about six hundred and thirty one folks in April and March. Some of the programs we wanted to share with you, this is the new share out that kicked off in spring. It's the after school game time is wrapped up, as you know, but was very successful still in spring. We have the after school B M X and mountain bike camps, our gymnastics programs, our Japanese martial arts. Ice skating has wrapped up now, but was thriving still in March and April. Lacrosse, pickleball clinics, soccer, swim lessons, volleyball leagues, and then a new rollout of a program called Wonderful Wednesdays, and that's for children two to five, exploring in science, creativity and movement. Last but not least, community events. Ellen's doing a great job with community events. The numbers are up in support and overall execution. So we had sixteen events permitted and or supported, of which six were internal. Produced one event, which was the Easter egg scramble. And in April, we had twelve events permitted or supported, of which three were internal and support to other departments. Of course, we produced the Arbor Day celebrations, one event with six elements. And then, as you recall, we had seventy three event permits to date, five are new events. Four out of one hundred and fifty nine banner spots are left on Main Street. And also, this will be the final reminder for the Fourth of July festival, July third through the sixth. Ellen wanted me to share with you the details. So we're going to be collaborating, of course, with the Business Improvement District, the Chamber, the La Plata County Fairgrounds, Visit Durango, and the Y P O D S will have two parades. The theme is play it like a local. Children's wagon parade at four P M, Main Avenue Parade at five P M. There will be thirty five independent events within the the few days, including ten bands, all free entry, six contests, two parades, three rodeos, boxing matches, and as of right now, fireworks as well. Any questions?
Thank you for that report. Okay, so I'm curious about the total user for the rec center when you had one sixty, oops, what?
Sorry.
Eight thousand, sixty four thousand, is that one time users or is that members?
So that was combined March and April. So we've been averaging about thirty thousand a month, one thousand per day.
Okay, hey, thanks. That's all I want to know.
You bet.
Anyone online? All right, thanks, Kelly.
Okay, sorry, I've messed up the slide order.
You're good.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Next, Public Safety Department Monthly Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, I'm Nick Stacy, representing Chief Current at the Police Department. So right now, in our first hundred days with the new chief, he's kind of been in a big listening phase right now, trying to understand what everything is going on with the Police Department, where the needs are, where we can make efficiencies and changes. So we've gone out to all the employees right now, gathered responses from them. And then the supervisors are getting it up and then we'll meet with the command staff later this month and kind of start looking at all those efficiencies and things we can do. And just asking a lot of questions right now. The other thing is we're just keeping to build our team with a new chief in place. We're always in the new kind of storming, forming phase of a new organization and doing that. This wonderful picture here is our blue frosting that we always do on our cakes. And then community engagement. So we've been doing quite a bit of that recently, working with some community led groups. In particular, this last month, we were active with the Anemocu Drive Community Meeting on Traffic Safety up there. The chief and I were both present at that, listening to the community members and what their needs are. And then we'll work with the other departments in the city to kind of figure out how we can help satisfy all of those. Crime statistics, so really in April, on the four year average, where we were up the most was in larceny and theft. That went up significantly, but with that, we had twenty eight that were theft from auto, which we made a number of arrests on with that that were also stealing from cars in Cortez. We had seven shop liftings and eleven bike thefts. With the bike thefts, we did deploy our bait bike that we had out. And actually, we had somebody steal the phone out of the bait bike last month and we were to track them down and get them stopped before they left town. So we're we're working hard to catch the bike thieves. And we actually had somebody we arrested three times last, actually last week, three different stolen bikes. So we know who the people are, we're working on this, but stolen bikes are going to be a thing in town until people can unfortunately lock their things up a little bit better. That's just one of those things that we we try to educate the community with. Part one offenses. Yeah, four year average is up a little bit, kind of what I was just hitting on a little bit there, too. And then traffic stats, we did quite a bit more traffic enforcement this year compared to prior years. You can see three hundred ninety five warnings, thirty arrests, eighty eight citations, so a total of almost six hundred traffic contacts in April. Where the average you see there is three hundred and forty eight. So we're doing that, we really are trying to focus on traffic safety is an important thing for the community and for us. So we've been hitting that pretty hard and our officers have significantly improved their traffic stops and and contacts. That's what I have for you. Any questions on that?
Excellent, thank you. Any questions? Online? Great, thank you so much.
Oh, yeah. And Katie, Katie and I also have another video that we're going to share together.
Oh, perfect.
I'm Katie Fox, current operations manager of the Durango Emergency Communications Center. In order for us to continually enhance our nine one one emergency service systems, we obviously need staffing in the center. But not just staffing, we want to make sure we're bringing in the right people, having them walk through our doors. Excuse me, so it's going to be folks who are going to support our departmental and organizational core values and culture so that we can meet or exceed our goals and objectives. This video is one example of our effort to reach out to the right recruitment audience. Big thanks to Dale Krusak for producing it and I hope you enjoy it.
The Durango La Plata Communication Center is a veritable hub of activity. It's literally the heartbeat of public safety in that we're the very first contact for all of our client agencies.
And is it blocking traffic at all?
I know you said. We take the initial call, make sure we send the right responses. We answer all non emergency and emergency calls that are generated within La Plata County and determine what type of resource needs to be sent. Is it a law enforcement matter? Is it a medical issue? Does the fire department need to respond? Do we need to connect this person with mental health services? There's a lot that happens all day long, every day. And you know, one of my favorite sayings is every day is an adventure.
It's going to be a female out of California.
My job is basically to gather information as quickly as possible and send people who are going to go and assess the situation and try to help as best they can so that they are able to do their job effectively.
I am doing training for law enforcement right now to become a fully proficient dispatcher. Been about five months in training so far and I'm on my last portion, so that'll be finishing up here in the next month. When I came here, because I just moved here about a year ago, I got my E M T. And then I decided that I wanted to do dispatching for a little bit, get the feel of everything. I decided this was definitely a calling of mine to help people.
Not only are we teammates with our partners, but we're teammates with all the units that we dispatch for. And you really are a part of something bigger than yourself. And you get to contribute to not only public safety, but the safety of our officers as well and our first responders. That's a very, a very fulfilling, purposeful role to play.
And we're really lucky because the city and the county have recognized our center and our dispatchers as first responders, which is huge. That's a huge thing for us, but industry wide, nine one one dispatchers across the nation are still listed as administrative assistants.
How can I help you?
We talk to every person on their worst day. So it takes a lot of tact and empathy and compassion to take those calls. It's very stressful. We can go from somebody stole my trash can to, oh my God, my baby's not breathing in a matter of seconds. You know, they come to work every day with a smile on their face, do their best to help their community. They're very professional and proficient at the job that they do. I tell my people every day, thanks for coming to work today. Thank you for doing your job.
Any questions? Yeah, I.
It was excellent. It was good.
Yeah, I went and shadowed with Zeta not too long ago and the screens and all the calls and everything happening and it was, it's wild. But if you're bored and you want something exciting, that is a great job. Never a dull moment.
True.
So thank you so much for putting that together. Any other questions? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Next up is Library Services Department Monthly Report.
Hello. Hi, everyone. I am recovering from a knee reconstruction, so I'm not super speedy, but I'm very glad to be here with you today. My name is Daisy Grace, I'm the new Assistant Director at the library and I'm filling in for Luke, who's getting some well earned time off, so. Let's see, there's buttons. You know these, this is just a reminder. All right. So as usual, we're buying new stuff. We added quite a lot to the collection in April and our circulation continues to go up. And that is bucking national trends. We are not completely back to pre COVID numbers, but we can see it from here and that's unusual. So it is very exciting, the level that our community is engaging with us in traditional and non traditional ways. April was a huge month for programming. We had nine, over nine hundred attendees to youth programming, which indicates a fifty percent increase over same time last year. And we thought we were doing pretty great last year, so these are some big numbers. Adult programs, we did sixteen adult programs in a month. So, you know, quick math, that's that's for a week. That is a lot of activities for our adult community. And we had over four hundred and fifty attendees and that's a hundred percent increase over same time last year. These included celebrations for Poetry Month, which is April, is National Poetry Month. And we also had two very special programs with the Southern Ute Tribe in the month of April, which were well attended and were also available online for people to attend. We did three outreach events and that continues to be a increased focus of ours is trying to get out to where the community is, especially for folks who find it difficult to come see us. So you will see those numbers, we do as much as we can with the resources we have to also get out of the building. Reference questions, these continue to be down a little and we suspect it may be how we're collecting those statistics. So we'll be looking at that and making sure we're collecting those in as robust a manner as we collect our other numbers. If it does turn out that those are a little lower than we expect, then we'll look into the reasons why. In general, traditional reference services aren't the same bread and butter of a library as they once were. So it may be a real number, but it also may be an error in data collection. So we're looking into that for you and for ourselves. And we keep bringing in new cardholders. That's a lot of what happens when we do the outreach events and we do the level of programming that we've been doing is we bring brand new people in all the time. So two hundred and thirty three new cardholders in just April. And that's a ninety percent increase over new cardholders a year ago. And over twenty four thousand people came to see. And over 24,000 people came to see us in April. That also continues to be a number on a steady rise. Some of these frankly, we are ready to have plateau, but they're, they're still creeping up. Public room reservations, you may yourselves be occasionally trying to rent those rooms and know that it's a highly competitive environment. We, we have those occupied most of the time. And our computer use actually is going up, which is crazy. Because most people are coming in with their own devices, but we continue to be that safety net for folks who need the actual equipment as well as the access. Oh my gosh, I did that first.
Thank you. Any questions on the library? Yes.
Thank you. That was a great report. I'm curious. So with the increasing computer use at the library, are we going to have the capacity to keep growing with that?
We do, because you go back a couple of years, especially with the COVID interruption and we really bottomed out. So there actually is still capacity. We did remove a few computers as we came out of COVID, just because the usage wasn't there. At this point, the usage is coming back up, but we don't have waiting lines. It really is, you can pretty much walk in the door and access the internet, access the printers. So at this point, we're meeting the needs pretty well with the equipment we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that question.
Anything else online? Excellent. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Happy healing. Hopefully.
Thank you. I'll hobble out of here.
All right, we'll move on to reliable infrastructure and community connectivity, Transportation Department Monthly Report.
Good afternoon, City Council, Madam Mayor. I made the mistake of calling it evening earlier, so I got it right this time. Success. I am stepping in for Sarah while she is out on vacation. Devin King, Multimodal Manager for the Transportation Department. So we're going to do ours a little bit differently. We're going to look forward to June and kind of kick it off with what we have going on coming up. So kind of the biggest highlight would be the zero fare for better air again, 2024, June, July and August. So thanks to the larger tax funds. Already very excited about it. We've had success with it in the past and we're excited to see it again this year. On Friday, June 7th, that is the closing of Downtown's Next Step questionnaire. So so far we've received 475, I think is what I just saw, responses. 65 of those are businesses. Or property owners. Thursday, June 13th, we have the North Main ADA Improvements Public Meeting. So that is for that. You know, we have those two grants that we received from the state and those are to update transit facilities, sidewalk, curb ramps all along North Main from 17th Street to Animus View Drive. So that will be the first public meeting for the preliminary design on that project. Wednesday, June 26th, we have Clean Commute Day. So if you recall in the past, it's been Clean Commute Week. Well, we are learning that it's better to partner with others for a lot of these events and not just do our own full week of events. So we're starting to partner with a lot of the other community events that are going on and just kind of inserting ourselves. But we're still going to do Clean Commute Day, which falls on Bike to Work Day for Colorado. We call it Clean Commute Day because we really promote all sustainable transportation, not just biking, a little more inclusive. So we, the city will be hosting a station out in front of Maria's Bookshop from seven to nine AM. We'll have multiple vendors, free cycle checks and things like that, breakfast as well. And then that evening, we are partnering with the Animus City Night Bazaar and holding the Clean Commute Celebration with them. And we're very excited for that. Wednesday, June 26th, we have a neighborhood parking program meeting. And so that's kind of the first meeting to talk about that neighborhood parking program that was really, you know, initiated somewhat from neighborhood residents as well as the comprehensive parking management plan. And so that will be 5:30 at the Durango Public Library. So then upcoming in July, we also have several meetings going on then. I'm sure all of you are familiar with the Midtown Safety and Connectivity Improvement Project. So we're having the 60% design review and feedback meeting and it's going to be the second week of July. We're figuring out that exact date right now. So we're very excited to have that meeting to discuss that project in more detail. And then between now and then, we will actually be reaching out to a lot of the property owners and businesses in that area to just kind of discuss it before the meeting. Junction Street Traffic Calming Project. So that one, you know, we had two public meetings last fall and winter and they went really well. So this project is going very fast, which is awesome. And so we're having the 60% design review and feedback meeting towards the end of July. And you know, that project has been a great success as far as the neighborhood support for it. So we are looking forward to that meeting and that will be the last public meeting for that project. And then we are kicking off a new project called West Park Avenue Traffic Calming. And so that is West Park Avenue from Maine to Russe, Third Avenue, and that will be improving that. So if you're familiar, there's kind of a, a very big intersection with Second and 16th. So we'll be improving that intersection. There's also sections, no sidewalk. We know that the powerhouse has students that during the summertime, they have programs that go to that fast binder park. And right now there's not really any crossings. We've done some updates. I'm sure you're all seeing the temporary pilot project out there. So this will just be kind of formalizing that and going through that process. So we thought we'd really focus on Downtown's Next Step. And you know, again, that design questionnaire closes this Friday. We're pushing almost 500 responses so far, which is great. And just for a little feedback on the conceptual design, we got, we had two surveys. One had about 900 and something, and the other one had almost 1,200 and something responses. And in those two surveys, we had about 100 downtown businesses and property owners complete both of those surveys on each one. So each one had about 100 and you know, there's about 200 downtown businesses. And so that's kind of really like what's informed the preliminary design, which we're currently designing and what this survey, our current questionnaire, what it's really trying to get at is, you know, elements, you know. With any sort of project, there's always compromises. So what kind of elements can we shift here or there to really fit the needs of the community? And that would, that's what this questionnaire is really looking at. So we are working on the pilot project, which I know came before you just a couple of weeks ago. And so right now we are in the process of contracting for two new pedlets, which is part of the grant that we received. And we are also working now on materials for the curb extensions and demonstrating those. So again, that will be at Sixth, Seventh and Eighth Intersections. And at Sixth, Sixth, it will only be, or sorry, College. Same, same. It will be on the north side of that. And then on Eighth, it will be on the south side. And then at Seventh, it will be all four corners except for the strater. So we will be implementing that hopefully in the coming weeks. We're working on materials right now and then finding a contractor to put that all in. And then it will be up all summer and we'll be working a lot to get engagement with both visitors, people working. We'll do observations. So it's kind of a great opportunity for us to really see everything in action and see what it's going to look like, but also for other people so that we can get more feedback that way. And ongoing outreach, you know, at this point, we've met individually with almost 20, almost 30 businesses at this point. And so we'll kind of continue that process, really getting out there, feet on the ground. I have found that, you know, getting in that, getting in somebody's shop and really talking to them about what's going on with their business is a really helpful way for me to understand. And for also just to have that back and forth, real conversation. So that's been a great experience doing that. So we'll continue that. We'll also be at the farmer's market in a few weeks where we'll do some more capturing, getting folks feedback. And then we'll probably do some pop-ups on Maine as well to get just more engagement. And then we did apply for that DOLA grant and what that is intended to do is basically fill the rest of the gap for completing the full design of the corridor. And you know, that grant application was for $800,000. And we are going, staff will be going up to Montrose to present our, to the board who basically decides whether we get that grant or not. So far we passed the first internal review and they had very high regard for the application. So we're very helpful and excited for that opportunity. And so again, that's going to be towards the end of the June and then we will find out if we get that DOLA grant towards the end of July, early August is that timeframe. So I wanted to walk through the Downtown's Next Step preliminary design a little bit. I can't remember if it's actually been in front of you all or not. And this shows the May, or no, sorry, this shows the 700 blocks. So from Seventh to Eighth. And this kind of shows the curb extensions. As you'll see, we still have three lanes. So still that center left turn lane, like we have out there now, two travel lanes. And in that center left turn lane, we will have loading zones. And then you'll also see that we're still keeping a loading zone on the side. And there's discussion that that loading zone may be flexible in the future. Another key feature here that you may not know this, but there's not actually, there's one ADA accessible parking spot on all of Maine. And it actually doesn't comply with ADA standards. So we show two on the blocks right now, but that's something that we're definitely having the engagement discussion around and whether or not we really need two per block or if we can just do one. And then have them on the cross streets like we do now in some spots. So we're working with both Southwest Center for Independence as well as the community to figure out what, what the best suit, suit is there. I will say that there are some regulations that we have to put in some accessible parking spaces. So the flexibility is limited. And then as far as the curb extensions go, and so that's what's at the, you know, you'll see an area labeled as Charlie Stop. You'll see another area labeled as amenities and those are the curb extensions. So what that is, is it is narrowing the gap for pedestrians to cross. It's also putting them a little bit closer to the roadway. And again, all of this is in line with the current curb and sidewalks. So it won't be any higher. It'll be the same level that we have now. It's basically just an extension of the sidewalk out at the intersection. We are also discussing extending parking spaces to 22 feet. They're currently 20 feet. And we hear from a lot of folks that either have, you know, larger vehicles such as trucks, Suburbans, that they don't really fit very well in the spaces and then they end up getting a ticket. So we've heard that complaint from both county residents as well as people visiting and so kind of, and people living in town. I drive a truck, so I'm one of those people. And we're making space, that extra two feet will help folks when they are parking downtown. And then BioSwell, so that is that green area kind of towards the left side of the image that you're looking at. And what that is, is that is a storm drain management system. So instead of it just going down into a drain, it goes into essentially a little garden that also helps our water quality. So once it gets to the river, it has, you know, it's not full of trash. It's hopefully got less oil and other fluids from the roadway as well. And then we are proposing adding a few trees with this project. Again, you know, I think we've kind of heard from the community that one important aspect is the historical aspect. But one of the historical aspects is the view shed and those views that everybody is familiar with, like the iconic view of the strater. So we're definitely keeping that in mind and taking comments there. And the last bit is extending the sidewalk out. So the entire existing sidewalk would essentially be bumped out about another five feet and then that just adds additional sidewalk space. So we're also kind of taking community feedback regarding that and you know what that will look like moving in the future. So again, the pilot project will kind of demonstrate this, mainly it will demonstrate the curb extensions. And what that will help us look at is turning radiuses in reality and see what that actually looks like. And then also just give people a taste of what's, what's being designed and what we're talking about. So that is my last slide.
Questions?
Thank you for that presentation, Devin. Now I'm curious. Okay. So we're, we're losing the bike lanes and going with curb extensions. Because I don't see any bike lanes on that diagram that you had.
There are no bike lanes. Yeah.
No bikes. And so the bikes aren't going to be allowed on the sidewalks. That's solely going to be for people walking and shopping.
Yeah, cyclists are not allowed on the sidewalks. Correct.
And are there still going to be businesses having their little huts outside serving food?
No, no. So well, it would just be different. So for example, El Moro or Carver, how they have that seating area right up against the building. That's currently now allowed with businesses and it will be allowed in the future. But the bump out program that is like on the street, those would go away with this project.
Okay. So are we able to charge more for like at Carver's where they have the, they have more retail space there because that's like, I hate to be giving away tax dollars, you know, to freebies, to businesses when they already get plenty of extra help.
Yeah, we've been working heavily with community development because that would be really be handled by them since they set the permit and fees.
Can raise the prices on that if you're going to go forward though, because I just hate to be given subsidies to businesses when we're taken away from historical downtown Durango. Which is why people come here to shop and enjoy how quaint and nice Durango is.
Definitely. And we, we totally recognize the historical and we're keeping that in mind. And that's why, you know, again, these improvements we're talking about are about six inches high. It's really the sidewalk. And as far as the bistro space, you know, that will be up against the building as it's allowed now, but fewer businesses do it because of the space that they're allowed. So right now I think they're permitted up to six feet, which Scott can shake his head, yes. So they're allowed up to six feet as long as it doesn't constrict the sidewalk to less than four feet, because that's what is required by ADA. And so they're somewhat constrained now and with the expanded sidewalk, they would be able to have potentially a little more space. But again, we're leaving that up to community development to work on that and figure that out. And that will likely be part of the next public meeting is more conversation around them.
Okay, thank you.
We currently do charge though for those bistro tables, correct? Yeah, that's what I thought. Per square foot. Okay. I just wanted to make sure. And then how many, we've been getting, obviously since anything gets put in the Herald, we get a little bit more feedback when that happens, which is great. But I think people didn't know about the previous community engagement sessions and stuff. We've done three meet or more meetings than that on next steps.
Which phase are we talking about?
All of, I want to know all of it.
All of it? So during the conceptual design, I think we had like 19 meetings.
19 meetings.
Yeah. So some of those were stakeholder meetings. Some of those were, we had multiple public meetings and sorry, I don't have it in front of me.
So I know, I'm sure. Two, like I just, when I'm talking to people, I just want to make sure because they're like, when did this come up? And I was like, oh, like two years ago, we started talking.
Yeah, that was 2022. 2021.
2021. Okay. I couldn't, I was like, I knew it was a long time ago.
Yeah. And during that process, we had again, like 19 meetings and through those two surveys, we had over 2,000 something responses and.
Yes. And then just to clarify, because I got confused, we don't, we do not have a bike lane downtown right now.
We do not.
Yeah. Bikes just go and I was like.
Correct. They are in the lane. So that's why you, you will see what we call shared lane markings or sharos in the travel lane. And so that's just indicating to drivers and cyclists that this is a shared space, which that is Colorado state law.
And this, it'll be the same.
It will be the same, but the idea with the design is, you know, with slower speed limits, it will feel that much more comfortable for cyclists and be safer for cyclists as well. But again, you know, like anytime we extend those curbs, that just further constricts the road, which further slows down traffic, especially on turning movements. And that's, you know, very data supported by.
Yeah, I'm super excited to see how it feels laid out. I was walking downtown yesterday and I was walking next to someone in a wheelchair. And that was so small that it was super challenging for them to like get in and around. And so it'll be interesting to see how that opens up and helps with the flow of everything. So thank you.
I am, I had a couple of questions if I may. Shall I continue? Yeah. I, I think as a follow-up on the bicycles, I remember during one of the meetings, it was mentioned that the cyclists are actually used your traffic calming. Do you guys hear me all right or? Yes. Can you guys?
Say that one more time. I don't think we heard you.
Okay. I, I'm trying to figure out what's wrong with this thing here, but I, I remember during the prior meetings that the bicycles on the roads is a strategy to slow down traffic as a traffic calming measure. I had a question, a couple of questions. First, how many companies have currently bump outs? Is it, was it 10 or 12?
Yeah, I would have to refer to Community Development, Scott Shine on that. I do not know the exact number that have bump outs this year.
Okay. Well, I'll leave that question open. I thought it was a relatively small number. I, I also, just like Mayor Beal walked Main Street several days ago. And I observed permanent roof structures blocking views. I saw bistro on the sidewalk along the road versus along the building and various other things that I think are not so aesthetically pleasing. And I do remember walking with Councillor Youssef last year. And I do remember walking with Councilor Yusef last year around this time, if you remember that, Councilor Yusef.
Yeah, I do.
And we observed the same thing. And I remember you had sent out an email to follow up and making sure that all these things are addressed and in compliance with what we expect. Is there any follow up this year on what we have, what we're facing on compliance?
Again, I believe that is through Community Development's program, so I am less in touch with that. I mean, I do know that we have been going out there, making sure that certain things are ADA compliant and that there is the four feet width and that you know, things are looking as they should. I, again, though, that is, I would have to refer back to Community Development for that.
Is Community Development there? Because there is multiple permanent roof structures that completely block the view. And most of them were unused. And then also what I was surprised of is that we currently have at least one, at least one that I noticed that has bistro seating on the sidewalk, but not against the building, but along the road. So not on the, not on the road. But.
I think we have Scott Shine that's going to come up here to help with the questions. It's really hard to understand you, Councilor Bosmans. Like I've worked, I'm catch, I don't know, maybe someone else can catch, but we're catching like part of your words. It seems like. So we'll do our best to answer, but maybe also follow up via email since this is not really like the next steps update. It's more about current questions that you have. If Scott wants more time, do you want to address some of it now? Is that okay? Sorry.
Briefly, at a high level, I can share, I think there are thirteen businesses that had bump outs this year. That doesn't include bistro table permits as we've distinguished their two different programs. There is a lot of info online about the design standards for both bistros and bump outs. But if there are specific concerns, we'd be happy to take those and we can make sure they're in compliance with what was approved.
Excellent. Thank you. Does that work, Councilor Bosmans? Send a follow up email if there are specific concerns on the design standards that differ from what's online?
I, I, I think I just did. Yeah. So the roof, permanent roofs and the bistro space along the road. And I think the code enforcement is way more knowledgeable than I am on the intricate details of the code and the requirements. So, thank you though.
All right, thank you. Oh, wait, one more.
One more question. Okay, so for this design right here, for this whole block, there's only nine parking spots. Is that correct?
That is correct as the preliminary design goes.
Well, maybe I would suggest cut off like Durango Coffee and Hermosa Cafe and come back because nine cars is not a lot to keep retail business going.
And I can, I can just provide that the analysis as far as lost parking spaces versus current parking spaces is no fewer than when the bump out program first started. So it's, it's not any fewer or less one of those two than when the bump out program is in session. And I will say, as far as the engagement that we're doing right now, that's a lot of what we're doing is do we need to shorten some of the curb extensions and get more parking back in? And that's really what we're trying to capture right now from a lot of the business owners as well as the public and see, you know, what adjustments do we need to continue to make to the design?
Okay, so this is a continuous process?
Correct. Yeah, this is not the final design by any means.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
As well on the design. And I don't, you haven't, you're not sharing the screen anymore, so I'm not seeing it. But I had a question on that. Oh, thank you. Those, the small light green circles with squares in them, what are those?
Those are existing trees and then the square is the, the existing grate that is associated with them.
So there's, those are the small light green circles are existing trees.
Correct. And then the dark green ones are new proposed trees.
And we will keep those light green trees?
Correct.
Okay. Interesting. What are, what are the purple dots?
Those are people.
Oh, people. Thank you. Okay. And you haven't shown any bistro seating?
We do not because it hasn't been determined how much that space will be. That will be, you know, something that Community Development will work through. So we haven't defined how much space would be bistro seating. And it may also, you know, like as it does now, it may somewhat depend on the location of the business and other constraints.
Interesting. Okay, thanks so much.
Yeah.
Just anecdotally, do you know how roughly parking, how many parking spots are between seventh and eighth currently?
I can follow up. I don't.
More of like, what is that?
We do have that number. Yeah, and I can provide that in a follow up.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, next up, Public Works Department Monthly Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilors and all. So I'm Allison Baker, Public Works Director. And wanted to update you on Public Works for the month of April. Public Works Department aligns with strategic goal of reliable infrastructure and community connectivity. In the Utilities Division, the city's water demand increased from eighty million gallons in April of twenty twenty-three to ninety-one million in April of twenty twenty-four. This was a thirteen percent increase. We had a mild winter with low precipitation and irrigation systems are coming on a month earlier than usual, which has led to more usage. The water treatment plant received a fifteen thousand dollar grant from C D P H E World Health Unit to purchase needed fluoridation supplies and lab equipment. Contract was awarded, which will allow beginning a feasibility study for upgrading College Mesa Water Treatment Plant. Expansion that will work on treatment trains to enhance the volume that we're able to treat in the existing College Mesa plant. Santa Rita Pump Station, the pre-oxidation capital project was completed, which will support treatment processes if we're in a position where we're only using animus water in the winter. The chemical composition is different from Florida. So it's good to have both options instead of just one. Residuals Management dredge project, again, it's first full season of operation, which is exciting from our point of view for it's fifteen year old project in the making, putting that together and enhances the bio solid usage and environmental sustainability of this plant. At the wastewater treatment plant, we're treating about fourteen percent less wastewater than in April of last year, which is sort of the flip side of the water due to a mild winter with less runoff, less infiltration and inflow into the sewer systems. The cogeneration system in the water system takes methane gas, which would otherwise be wasted, runs it electrical generator, which produces enough electricity to power thirty-nine homes for an entire month. So it's a nice use of waste material. The artists are continuing to paint a gorgeous massive mural on the side of the facility. The sewer facilities, building and walls along the Animus River Trail. The mural was officially unveiled at Animus River Days last week. And if anybody hasn't seen it, it's colorful and beautiful and worth a walk. In water distribution, Tancaverte up in northern Durango, above the city market is cleaned, disinfected and online for the summer. So we're prepared for fire protection and extra water use. Number of utility locates significantly increases from March to April with emergency locates doubling. Actually, construction season as well as our shoulder season, differential movement of the earth does create more water, I'm gonna say water breaks and give you guys a clue that in utilities, there's superstition that saying the phrase water breaks is a big no-no. So we call them WB's. And if anybody's ever wondering what we are, you, you can ask me. I'm superstitious about something, but that's not one. So please feel free to ask. There were four large WB's that occurred in the same week. Our collection is in distribution crew responded quickly to each rotating shifts, working twenty-four hours for days straight until all the brakes were repaired and all customer services were restored. Great work on their part. Distribution crew worked closely with capital improvements. Contractors on North College Drive reconstruction project and continued service line material inventory for regulatory requirements that are coming up for lead and copper analysis requirements by the state. Sewer collections crew had scheduled and surprise unscheduled maintenance and achieved five new certifications within the division. Streets Division had spring cleanup, hauled three hundred and eighty dump trucks of waste material to the landfill. The the spring cleanup was completed on time and was actually a fifty percent increase in the volume over last year's pickup. Seems likely to, that was primarily the nice early warm weather, getting people out, cleaning yards, that kind of thing. The crews also swept one thousand one hundred fifty-six miles of streets throughout the city, which if you consider we have a hundred miles of streets, that's a lot of sweeping. They've gone over everything about ten times and we're still working on it. Prepared and replaced a hundred and sixty street signs throughout the city. We've had a lot of sun damage over the last few years. So that's quite an improvement to see new signs. In trash and recycle, seventy-four trucks, trash truck loads of compacted trash were taken to the landfill. Eighty-seven tons of single stream recycle was diverted from the landfill in three hundred and three bales that went down to Albuquerque, which is about half as much as usual, just due to the transition back to our normal operations after the Baylor rehab. We got three new commercial accounts and took in eighty-five hundred dollars worth of recycling material at the front public drop off. Capital improvements, construction management. Some of these kind of go back and forth time wise, so bear with me. Projects that were out to bid in April, Animus River Trail. Kelly talked about a little bit. There was a bid for reconstruction of the area from Santa Rita to Albertson's that did not receive a bid and was reissued for rebidding. Work continued on pickleball courts as her great picture showed. And the last I heard, the epoxy is due to be installed next week. So pickleball people get ready. Nine one one communication center, HVAC is complete. And Thirty Second Street Detention Pond is nearing completion. Project started in April. The late night horse entrance was intended to start at that point and there was quite a bit of negotiations and working out materials. And it is up and running and they're doing their pre-construction, getting organized. Chapman Hill Ski Area in progress. County Road two fifty, two fifty-one, we've been working diligently to find the most effective traffic control program to get rush hour traffic through there and have visible attainable signage. North College Reconstruction Project continues and the Santa Rita Reclamation Facility water line replacement is complete. Engineering did the middle of our annual permit for the recycle center, which has a separate permit for stormwater from the city and hosted stormwater trainings for contractors and any other interested parties. Permits continued working with Community Development. Siding for us was a hot tap at seven thirty-eight Main Avenue. So process where the water does not have to be shut off in order to attach a new line. And it was very successful and hopefully will be a leader in options that we use in the future. Foundation permit was issued for Durango Fire Protection District. The, the missing building is now working on a foundation. Public Utilities Commission Permit is in progress for work with Fourteenth Street Intersection with C dot. And ongoing projects that engineering is reviewing in coordination with Community Development. Tree Farm Village, Champion Express Car Wash, which is now complete. And two fifty, two fifty-one annexation petition is in progress. And we're working to wrap that up with, before before we leave for getting the funding from the county. That concludes the Public Works Update. And if there's anything I can share, otherwise we'll go, yes, Mayor.
Thank you, Allison. I just have one question. Okay, when you're talking about the waste recovery system and you had about twenty-seven thousand kilowatt power being produced by that, is that power going back into the grid or is that being?
It goes back into reuse in our system, in the sewer treatment system.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Allison? Perfect, thank you. Next up, we have our Aviation Department Monthly Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Tony Bicari, Airport Director at the Durango La Pota County Airport here for a short update on airport activity. A quick just run through the activity measures here. These are current figures through the end of April. Our final May statistics are just starting to trickle in, not yet available. So airline enplanements or passenger traffic continues to be up robustly. We're up fourteen percent year to date over twenty twenty-three so far through April. That's being done on just a three percent seat capacity increase. So we're seeing very strong demand in the market. That's driven our load factors or percentage of seats filled, close to eighty percent, which is a very strong metric for us, especially coming out of the, the early portion of the year, which is traditionally the period of lowest overall demand at the airport. Typically, we see a spike in overall load factors and demand as we move through late spring through summer into fall. So very, very strong early season performance. You can see parking lot exit volume, rental car contract days and concession revenue moving in pace or above those figures as well on the net positive side. And then the only two laggards we have are slight on the general aviation landed weight. That's essentially private aircraft activity as well as air freight, which continues to be consistent with national numbers where we're seeing slight downticks on air freight movement. Here you can just see a quick visualization on the passenger traffic front. So the green line depicting twenty twenty-four comparative to the orange from last year. So steady double digit increases for the first four months of the year. And in fact, the first four months of the year were all individual monthly records. January being the busiest January of all time, so on and so forth through April. We'll see if May proves out to be similar here when we finalize those numbers in the next week. A quick rundown on airline route network as we enter into the busy summer season. You can see the June airline flight schedule there. United continues to take a very consistent tact with five daily flights to Denver, running a consistent year round flight schedule. American has been the more seasonal or variable carrier in our market, down gauging to some degree over the winter. But now they're ramping up for summer activity after running three daily Dallas frequencies in May. That number is now up to four and at times five daily through June. So a significant increase in capacity as American looks to lean into our busiest time of year as we hit summer through fall. And then continuously see three daily on the Phoenix route with American as well. And a couple of notes, United's seasonal Durango Houston service did start on Memorial Weekend. That runs on Saturdays and Sundays and will. That runs on Saturdays and Sundays and will be that way through mid-August, uh, as well as American Airlines inserting the larger Airbus A three nineteen equipment on Saturdays starting this upcoming weekend. And then just rundown on, uh, airport capital projects, a fairly lengthy list here. I won't go through them all one by one, but happy to take any questions. Couple of high point notes here on, on the terminal, uh, Phase One A is, as we know, is, is largely open to the public. We're finishing up some remaining pieces, namely our family restrooms and nursing mother's room. Uh, those are coming along nicely and on track to hopefully open to the public, uh, towards the end of June or into early July, as well as a replacement for a historical emergency generator at the airport. So just finishing up the last pieces on Phase One A, uh, but everything is running pretty smooth to close that project. On Phase One B, our guaranteed maximum price is totally finalized with our contractor and really just we're in a bit of a pending status, waiting for a significant FAA discretionary grant to be issued. Uh, the FAA was slowed pretty significantly this year on their grant program as Congress, uh, struggled to pass a reauthorization bill for the FAA, which is required on a five-year basis. That was recently passed by Congress towards the end of May and signed by the president, uh, clearing the way for F Y twenty-four grants to begin to be issued. Uh, nice in time to close the year at a total sprint in the last four months of the federal fiscal year. So, uh, right on top of things in terms of that. So we've been caught up a little bit in that. So we're gonna be in a bit of a waiting game. Uh, we'll have to hang tight for another couple of months until that grant is issued. Since it represents a significant amount of the overall funding for this project, we're not gonna sign our construction contract until we have those grant, uh, dollars committed to Durango. So, but we're prepared to do that as soon as that grant comes in hand and, and break ground, hopefully by late summer, at latest, early fall on the Phase One B project. And then just other note, uh, for anyone who's been at the airport, you've seen some significant construction in our parking lots. Our upper overflow lot is in the process of being paved. That project started on May fifteenth. We're just under a month in. Overall, things are on schedule. We're still anticipating a completion date at or before July fifteen. Uh, so the parking lots are very congested currently. Things are, are very tight, uh, at the airport, but we're managing it. Uh, our staff are doing a great job of being out there and be visible to the public. We brought in some additional temporary staffing to help with moving people around, uh, overall. And we've specifically targeted the timing of this project to align with a period of time that is historically the lower demand for overall parking during our construction season. Typically, our demand for parking really starts to peak towards the end of the summer and into the fall as local travel really spikes. Um, whereas early summer tends to be a little bit higher visitation period for the airport who are using rental cars and not, uh, public vehicles at the airport. So, uh, so far, so good in terms of being able to manage that project and maintain parking capacity. Tom, the clicker is not, no longer working. There we go. Okay. Just a couple, wrap up a few photos, uh, as mentioned. Phase One A on the terminal here, these are just, uh, smaller spaces here. This is wrapping up the last two family restrooms and nursing mother's rooms. So, uh, we've been able to do the underlying utility work, repor the slab in those areas. Uh, these photos are now two weeks aged. Uh, that area's all now been framed in and is, uh, being dry-walled as of this week. So coming along pretty quick, which is exciting. Uh, and then the aforementioned parking expansion project, uh, the first phase on that was expanding ADA parking in our credit card lot, which is the left photo there. Uh, that is now complete and open. So we've opened up a total of eleven ADA parking spaces, which is more than double what we had before, uh, which is great. And also add additional van accessible spaces, which were previously not something that was implemented when the time that the parking lot was previously constructed. So happy to be able to bring those additional amenities in, in addition to adding overall capacity at the airport. And, uh, with that, that's my presentation.
Thank you, Tony. Any questions? All right.
Thanks.
Appreciate it. Next up, Strategic Workforce Development.
We can go ahead and skip that, Mayor. That happens quarterly. So not this.
Excellent. And then engaged and informed community.
Mayor and Council, my name's Ben Florine, uh, Chief Deputy Clerk. And, um, we actually, uh, are providing updates through the municipal court this afternoon. And, um, our judge, Matt Margeson, actually just popped in. Perfect timing. So. Thank you.
I, I just wanted to give an update on where we're at as far as the municipal problem-solving court goes, uh, what that plan is and what it looks like moving forward. And so, first off, I just wanted to talk about, uh, why we're creating this court, what our goals for the court are. Essentially what our mission here is, is to, uh, continue assisting in the issues that we know Durango is dealing with as it relates to, um, individuals who are unhoused. That generally comes from the fact that they have substance, substance abuse, dependency issues or are mentally ill or some combination of those two things. Those are things that we frequently see within the municipal court. And frankly, you can't fix one if you can't address the other issues as well. And so we're trying to develop a program that deals with all three of those issues and addresses them in sort of a head-on approach, using the resources that we have within the community already and just kind of better harnessing those, uh, to get assistance to these individuals. Goals here, again, we want to provide, uh, mental health and substance abuse services to the individuals within our community that are dealing with homelessness. Um, in addition to that, the unhoused population just really isn't served right now by any of the programs that I've seen over in the, the county or district court, um, because it's so hard to deal with the housing issues here. And we think we do have some solutions for that coming down the right, uh, the road here. Want to talk with you guys a little bit about the process of what we're doing in this court. The first is, is that this is a voluntary pre plea program. Say that three times fast. And what I mean by that is that somebody doesn't have to say they're guilty of something in, in order to get into this program. I think it's very important that these individuals have an opportunity to address these issues before we get to a stage where they are, um, found culpable for various actions that they've taken within the community. Because in a lot of instances, there's not a lot else we, we can do with somebody who is seriously mentally ill. They might not, um, necessarily qualify to come before the court from a competency standpoint. And as municipal court judge, I can order a competency evaluation like I could across the street. And so, one, protects their rights, but two, it's also doing so in, and frankly, a nonjudgmental way that we think we're gonna need to use in order to get people interested in entering into this program because the program itself is rather intensive. Why do I say that? Well, it's going to be, uh, a program between nine months and twelve months. It is a program that initial step is to get in evaluations through access mental health. And I'll talk a little bit more about our, our community partners here in a moment. Um, we want to provide then wraparound services for this individual to get them to appointments. Um, so services as far as getting them to and from the various locations. We have a specialty court coordinator, uh, Ms. McDonald from Anna, who is assisting us in ensuring that these individuals know where they're supposed to be and know when they're supposed to be there and then can make that happen for this person. Uh, the last part of this is a maintenance phase. Once they've engaged in that, uh, process with access to get the evaluation completed, there's gonna be treatment recommendations. And based on those treatment recommendations, they're gonna come back before the court monthly and give us an update on how they're doing. We have an R O I for, uh, release of information, um, with, uh, access mental health. That is provided to all court participants so that we know where this individual's at in the program, how they're progressing and whether or not they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Our community partners here, uh, the, the primary, uh, three that we have, uh, access mental health, Manasuit Kitchen and Community Compassion Outreach, Outreach. Um, all three of those, uh, we have M O U's with. As I mentioned previously, Ms. McDonald from Manasuit Kitchen is providing us, uh, the services of a client coordinator. And essentially, her role is to ensure that these people know what they're supposed to do and that these folks can get where they're supposed to be. And she can coordinate the services through access and community compassion to get them out there. Community compassion has agreed to provide services as far as transportation goes, um, for us. And they're also working right now, um, I don't, I don't know if you guys have heard, but they are in the process of securing housing, um, for a program that they have. And I've been talking, um, uh, with Ms. Burkett about what that looks like and whether or not we can get participants from our program into their program. And initial signs are pretty hopeful about that. Access Mental Health is one of our biggest providers here. They, um, are the folks that are actually getting people signed up onto the, uh, Medicaid program. And they're providing continuing treatment for us as well. In addition to that, uh, we have the core team who has been, one, a, a great resource for us because they know all these individuals and they know the circumstances that these individuals are in because they deal with them on a relatively frequent basis. That's a great program in our local community and I am very happy to have them as a part of this, um, court because they also provide input to us about who should be in this program and whether or not they feel like that person could be successful. The City Prosecutor's Office, as well as Alternative Defense Counsel, is involved in this program as well. They are voting members, um, to make a determination about whether or not a, a program participant can come into the program. And in addition to that, they're our primary point of contact with these individuals and they know who we're dealing with in the community. They can make good, strong recommendations about this. We have already begun implementation phase of this. Uh, we have those M O U's that I mentioned, completed with access and community compassion outreach. Uh, we had our first meeting and we have our first program participant as of, uh, May thirty-first. So I kind of talked with you guys previously about what a good timeframe was to get this along. And I'm very happy to, uh, be on that, uh, target deadline. So we do have our first participant. And, uh, frankly, our monthly court meetings are gonna be Fridays at, from noon to one, uh, with lunch provided. And the reason why is because, one, more people come if you say you have lunch. But two, it's an additional incentive we can provide to people to just come to court and, and be part of this program. Um, I also wanted to let you guys know that we just found out today that, um, via email, uh, we haven't had the formalized letter yet, but the, uh, grants that we have applied for with this, they, they will be fully funding, um, our program. So I am excited about this program. I'm happy to see it get off the ground. And just wanted to give you guys an update on where we're at, what we're doing, what's happening. Any questions?
No question, but wow, uh, going, going through, um, the review that we had with you and you talked about the ambitious date of May thirty-first and to see you come through with that is just mind-blowing to me. And thank you for the heavy lift, you know, getting the prosecutor and the city attorney involved and the, all these community partners. Like such a significant heavy lift that everybody was kind of afraid of how much work that was gonna be. You guys took on and I cannot be prouder for helping figure out a solution. We might be learning things along the way, but man, I am super stoked that, that you guys have really taken on this, this elephant one bite at a time and we're making moves. So kudos to you and everybody else that's been, uh, a part of this. So thank you so much.
I could not have done this without significant help from the folks that we have in place. Just wanna say thank you to Marissa Rupp, who helped me significantly with the grant funding portion of this. Um, obviously, the, uh, City Attorney's Office has been of great assistance to us and, and basically anything I need. Um, they're there to talk me through it, help me out with what they can. And, uh, so it's, it has been a learning experience, but it's been a good one.
Do realize this is a four-year commitment and all the great stuff you're doing cannot lead to you leaving us.
That's not the plan. I just.
Where's the signature page?
Just sign me up. We're all good to go. No, I, 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 I just wanted to, I know you guys wanted an update and I just wanted to make sure that I'm letting you know we're, we're hitting our targets here. Um, it's a work in progress and we recognize that. We know things are gonna have to change along the way as we move through this pro- process and program. But we're absolutely trying the best we can to make this happen.
Well, I'd like to say thank you for the update because if you look at us last year, we didn't have any of this. So now we're looking very hopeful for the future for our, our, um, residents who need help with getting Medicaid and getting into programs and working for a better, um, lifestyle. So thank you.
I'm super impressed with your effort and organization and getting this off the ground. So congratulations. And yeah, we'll be watching and can't wait to see the success.
Thanks guys. I'll keep you up to date.
Yep. Anyone online? Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you.
Thanks so much.
All right. That looks like it's it. So now just adjournment. We will see you back here at five thirty.